Good evening, everybody. At 6 o'clock, I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll begin with an invocation led by Councilmember Singh, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Fugit. Please rise as you're able.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fugit, did you have your lights on?
I've got them.
Okay, okay. Ready for -- okay, sorry. Would you please call roll, Mr. Johnson?
Councilwoman Fugit.
Here.
Councilwoman Helsley.
Here.
Councilwoman McKenzie.
Here.
Councilwoman Parker.
Here.
Councilwoman Ryder.
Here.
Councilwoman Roberto.
Here.
Councilwoman Singh.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
And Councilwoman Thomas. All members are present, Mayor.
Okay. Is there a motion on the minutes from our last meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Are there any items to be withdrawn? Are there any items to be postponed? Councilmember Singh.
Yes, I'd like to postpone Item 12-U for four weeks. The neighborhood wants to get a chance to get together.
Motion's been made to postpone for four weeks for Item 12-U. It's been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion on the motion to postpone? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion to postpone carries. Any other items to be postponed? Any items to be added by motion? Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Seconded.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, time now for my mayor's report. First, I want to start by thanking everyone who came out to the festival on the Fourth. It was a perfect, family-friendly event to celebrate the Fourth of July. A big thanks to our special events team, the public service team, and all our first responders who organized the day's events and kept everyone safe in the heat. I was able to go out at the first thing in the morning when they were setting up, and then I went home and stayed away from the heat for most of the day while everyone else was out working or enjoying things. But I came back and enjoyed the Knoxville Symphony Orchestra, and I know some other people who attend our meetings enjoyed that as well. So, thank you to the Symphony Orchestra for their wonderful concert. It was a nice occasion. Speaking of happy occasions, later this week, one of our largest KPD recruit classes will be graduating and hitting the streets. Thirty-six men and women have completed the academy and will officially become officers Thursday night at 6:00 at Sevier Heights Church. So, everyone on council is welcome to attend to celebrate this graduating class and welcome them to the city. And then, in the not-so-good news department, you may have heard that upon the passage of the big, beautiful bill out of Washington, that essentially defunded the program that is over the Reconnecting Communities grant that we announced last year. This grant was a KCDC grant in partnership with the city, and while KCDC has not received official notice of the funding withdrawal, we are already pivoting to seek other grant opportunities to fund these infrastructure and connectivity improvements in Knoxville. This is a stark reminder of why local dollars for local projects are more important than ever before. And a quick reminder about our rules of decorum, we are here to do the city's official business. Those who wish to speak either to specific agenda items or during public forum need to sign up with the city recorder before 4:00 PM. Do not use profanity, and when speaking to specific agenda items, you must stay on topic. Remarks must be germane to the question ahead of the assembly. That is, statements must have bearing on whether the pending motion should be adopted. Those who fail to adhere to these rules will be ruled out of order. For those who are listening, please note, if you disrupt a public meeting, you will be asked to leave or escorted out. Thank you in advance for everyone's respect for these rules. That concludes my mayor's report. Are there any reports of council members? Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, I've got some good news for the folks up in Norwood. As we know, we've been working on this potential park in conjunction with Dominion, a development up there. It's the old Girl Scouts Park. It used to be 40 acres. And through collaboration with myself, the neighborhood, and Dominion, who've been really, really cooperative, Dominion has now transferred a 30-acre donation to Legacy Parks. And the next step, of course, will be Legacy Parks as a go-between. We'll give it over to City Parks and Recs, and a much-needed amenity there. I'll have more to say on it later, but I just wanted the folks mainly out in Norwood who've been patient with this process to know that probably the most important step has already been taken, and we look forward to progressing onward until we have that significant amenity for that neighborhood. So, thank you.
Great, that's great news. Councilmember Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let everybody know that on Tuesday, July 15th, from 5:30 till 7:00 at Coffee and Chocolate, which is located at 7240 Kingston Pike, I'm going to have a "Meet Your Reps," which I know my friend, Councilmember Fugit, will remember from us doing those back in the day. But this is a great opportunity for residents in the Bearden and West Knoxville area to meet their local representatives in a relaxed and informal setting. And so, I'm very, very pleased to be partnering with School Board Representative Kathryn Bike and County Commissioner Shane Jackson to hold this meeting. So, remember, that's Tuesday, July 15th, from 5:30 to 7:00 at the new location for Coffee and Chocolate.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember McKenzie?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to take a moment to invite everyone out tomorrow at 3:00 at Tank Strickland Park in Burlington community on Asheville Highway for the unveiling of the bronze statue replacement that was stolen. As most of you know, that was last year, if I'm not mistaken. And a special thank you to Town Hall East and CAC who coordinated getting this donation drive to replace the statue, and they'll also be having an ice cream social there as well. So, the community and the city are invited to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Few quick notes. July 17th, which is a Thursday, City Council will host a workshop in this room at 4:00. We will discuss a corridor study project by CAT and Knoxville Knox County Planning. So, the results of that from that research partner are in, and those teams will give us a review of their findings. So, that's July 17th at 4:00 PM. Second, I want to wish Mr. Johnson a happy 10-year anniversary as Knoxville City Recorder. It's no small feat, putting up with a lot of council members for 10 years. Yeah, bravo. So, thank you, Mr. Johnson, for your steady hand over this body. And lastly, wish Councilwoman Parker a happy birthday today, which is a pretty rare event that it falls on the council days. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Councilmember Parker. All right, seeing no further reports from council members, we'll move on into the agenda.
8B is a resolution approving the appointment of Marcus Chaddy to the Metropolitan Knoxville Airport Authority.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, motion carries.
8C is a resolution confirming the appointment of Craig Pickett Jr. and Shante Southwood to the African-American Equity Restoration Task Force.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded.
Councilmember McKenzie?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, if Mr. Pickett and Ms. Southwood are here, if you would please stand to be recognized. We want to thank you for your commitment and your dedication to serve on the task force and look forward to working with you, and also see our chair is here as well, Ms. Tanisha Fitzgerald Baker. So, thank you, and we look forward to putting you to work.
Thank you for your willingness to serve. Any further questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, motion carries.
9D is an ordinance to amend and restate the supplemental plan provisions of the City of Knoxville Employees Pension System so as to effect certain requirements under the Internal Revenue Code to maintain the pension system as a qualified governmental pension plan, to incorporate prior amendments into a single document, and to make other housekeeping changes.
Motion made to approve and seconded.
Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, motion carries.
9E is an ordinance approving the request of Alex Bodazat to forward an amendment to the Northwest City Sector Plan from low-density residential to medium-density residential for property located at 4423 Ball Camp Pike, 3rd District.
Motion made to approve. Is there a second?
And seconded?
Okay. Motion made to approve and seconded. We have some speakers signed up. First, Benjamin Mullins to speak in favor, and then following that, Adrienne McNauton. But go ahead. Mr. Mullins, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
(inaudible).
Your microphone, please turn the microphone on.
Can you hear me now? Good.
Yeah, one minute penalty. Now, just a minute.
Ben Mullins, 550 West Main Street. I'll be brief. This is on second reading. We talked about this a lot last, or a couple of weeks ago. Representative Alex Bodazat, he's the owner and developer for this property at 423 Ball Road. We're asking for a plan amendment from LDR to MDR and a rezoning from RN1 to RN3 with the intent to build a 32-unit townhome development. If the RN3 is approved, then, you know, the townhome development would have to go back through a special use through the Planning Commission, and could, if there's an appeal, end up before this body. I know there are several neighbors that have been opposed to this. Thanks to Councilmember Singh, we have been engaging with them, interacting as an intermediary, trying to address some of the concerns. We are committed, like I said last time, we are going to put a sidewalk along the front edge of our property, and we're also, I know there's concern about some of the landscaping and privacy. There's going to, there has to be a landscaping buffer with the RN3, there are landscaping standards. Along with that, we're committed to an eight-foot privacy fence along the western boundary, and I know that was something that the neighbors had asked for. I know that doesn't alleviate all their concerns, but many of the concerns that they have is something that would be addressed through the ordinances and development standards in place as we move through the development plan. When we did, we did our, redid our zoning ordinance, we put a lot of standards in place to help address the concerns such as stormwater, landscaping light, noise, things of that nature. I'd ask that you approve this. It was recommended by planning staff. It was unanimously recommended for approval by Planning Commission. I know there's some people here to speak about this as well. I'd like to reserve the remaining time I have just to address any questions or anything they might bring up that I might not have been able to address, if that's okay, Mayor.
Mr. Mullins, when the council speaks on this, they can ask you questions and call you up at that time.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
The next person signed up to speak to this is Adrienne McNauton. Ms. McNauton, if you could come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Hello, my name is Adrienne McNauton. I live at 3148 Kingsmore Drive in the neighborhood right behind the property. I appreciate the privacy wall, thank you. We did ask about proper drainage for the privacy wall for the residents that have their backyards right up against the privacy wall. As we all know, standing water breeds mosquitoes, and I would, your response was that you would go according to city regulations. I'm not sure that that really supports what we need as far as proper drainage from the neighborhood. I also would request that you also put the privacy wall along the houses on Hazelwood Road that are bordering your property. Additionally, I do have some concerns, as we all do, about traffic. It took an additional 10 minutes to get to work this morning because of the ditch digging that was going on during rush hour for us. And we're concerned about people pulling out there, additional accidents, as well as people trying to cross the Ball Camp Pike to get to the sidewalk on Hinton. So, we hope that all these things are addressed. That's it. Thank you for the privacy wall.
Thank you. Councilmembers, that concludes people who signed up to speak to Item 9E. Councilmember Parker and then Singh.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to just emphasize some of the points that the speaker just made. Those were some of the issues I had brought up in the last meeting. The privacy wall is welcome, but in your listing of items that you intend, or your client intends to move forward with, I didn't hear drainage for the privacy wall. So, I wanted to ask if that's going to be a part of the plan, because I think we've acknowledged that the stormwater is an issue and that it does drain down onto your client's property, I believe. But with that privacy wall, it could then pool at the, in the residence area. So, I wanted to ask about the plans for that.
Sure, and we can, I mean, we're talking about, when you say privacy wall, we're talking about an eight-foot privacy fence, you know, and so, I think that can be constructed in a way that would allow water to drain underneath it.
Yep.
So, it won't create a dam on the property, obviously.
Exactly.
It does flow down, and we wouldn't want to impede that. So, that's something that we would, we would look at when we're doing that privacy fence, so we wouldn't create any impediment to the natural flow of water. Of course, as attorney, you know, if we do that or damage somebody's property, they could sue us, but we don't want to do, we don't want to get into a position like that. We want to do it right the first time.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Singh?
Don't you sit down. Thank you for making some compromises with the neighborhood. What do you think? I don't think it's a big ask for the fence along Hazelwood. Do you have the authority to say yes to that?
That was the first time that had been mentioned, doing it along Hazelwood. So, I don't have the authority to say yes to that. I don't think that would be an issue, but I don't want to stand here right now and commit to it. You know, if, you know, if we're willing to do it on one side, I don't know why we wouldn't be willing to do it on the other, but that's not something I've had an opportunity to address with my client yet.
Okay. And then, of course, tending to the drainage, and we were talking about the flooding that happens, but you were downhill of that. And then, stormwater engineering will be involved.
Yes, and I'm sure with this, they've, they've heard the concerns, they know, you know, so they'll be looking at this very intently to make sure we're following all the right procedures and rules.
So, I'm going to approve it, but I really want to have continued conversations about Hazelwood defense. It's not a big ask.
We can, and, you know, obviously, this will, if we're doing the townhomes, which are intended, it has to go through a special use, so it'll be another application through the Planning Commission, and I will be engaged with the neighborhood, either through, with them directly if they're willing, or if you're willing to serve as an intermediary, be happy to be involved in that process and continue that conversation through the special use process.
Will it be before December? Because I won't be here then. No.
I don't know if it'll be before. I suspect it will be, because I know there's already some conceptual plans out there, so I do suspect it will be before December, but we're still willing to work with you even if you're not officially a council member.
And I am too. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Singh.
Then I'd like to make the motion to combine the three items, 9E, 9F, and 9G.
Mr. Mullins had signed up to speak on all three, but I don't think you object to that,
so, okay. Okay, motion to consolidate. Items 9E and F have been made. Any questions, and seconded, any questions or discussion on the motion to consolidate? Oh, I'm sorry.
E, F, and G.
Sorry. Sorry, E, F, and G. Does everyone understand the motion to consolidate? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion to consolidate passes. Back to the amended consolidated motion. Are there any further discussion on the consolidated motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Movements carry.
11H is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with Knox County in order for Knoxville Knox County Emergency Management Agency to accept $21,000 as a sub-recipient of a grant from the State of Tennessee Department of Military to maintain KIMA's capability to respond during Department of Energy emergencies.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11I is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an amendment to an agreement with the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation for the First Creek-Greenway-Broadway Streetscape Project, increasing the project funding by $1,653,716 for a total amount of $6,225,098, with the city funding $1,245,019.60.
Motion made to approve and seconded.
Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, I just wanted to underline for the public, I mean, we heard these figures, but 80% of the cost of this is going to be provided by the state, so that's important to know. And for the bang, bang for the buck that the city's contributing, the amenities here, I think, are well worth it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Oh, Councilmember Ryder?
Mr. Claybo, if you wanted to comment on the timeframe, I think we've beat that horse a couple of times here, but I like going through it again.
Yeah, please.
Keep you accountable.
Mr. Claybo, when is this going to be done?
So, we are in the right-of-way phase right now.
Still, huh?
Summer of '26 construction, probably an 18-month construction timeframe.
Okay, and as usual, we could make things happen faster, we just have to spend a lot more money to make it happen faster.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's one of the constituent questions that I get, is why can't it happen faster? So, thank you.
Councilmember Thomas?
And I was just going to say, Mr. Claybo, if you stick to that timeframe, I'll barely be able to cut that ribbon.
Yeah, let's make it happen. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with GeoSynTech Consultants Incorporated to provide professional engineering services for the Loves Creek Hydrology Phase, Study Phase 2 in an amount not to exceed $357,716.40 funded with the American Rescue Plan Act grant.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, Mr. Claybo, for, for public discussion and for anybody listening, can you tell us a little bit about what this project is and what results we expect to get from this?
So, we've just completed Phase 1 analysis, and it was more of a high-level study of looking at different storm events, and as most of you know, this area is, it really drains to a sinkhole, so there's no outlet, and so, the volume of water that that area receives is really important in how we manage that. And so, the first phase looked at the impact of different storm levels and volumes of water. The second phase now is going to refine that study even more, doing some geotechnical work to see as far as the karst topography, how it drains, but also try to relate the hydrology to future plans for the master plan for the Cherry Park.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Claybo. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Stansil Electric Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $2,586,516.50 for the Middlebrook Pike Advanced Traffic Management System project.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Claybo, we had a chance to talk about this a little bit, but it looks like we're setting the foundation for an intelligent traffic control system here. Could you talk to us about the benefits that people will be able to see from this type of system being deployed?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So, this project is, it's, there's 23 different signalized intersections along Middlebrook Pike that's included in the project. It's going to include communications, fiber optic connecting each signal, and that fiber optic line, communications line, will go back to our offices at Morris Avenue. It gives us the capability of controlling those signals, troubleshooting those signals from a centralized location. Whereas right now, we've got to send a technician to each box at each signalized intersection to do that work. Another huge benefit of this will be a new signal timing plan that will come out of that, so we'll get new signal hardware, but also a new signal timing plan that'll help with the efficiency of moving vehicles down the corridor.
Well, and I guess my understanding was that the older version of this, the signals have clocks, basically, that they start to get out of sync after a while, and so that's when you start to see, you know, I'm hitting every red light as I'm going through the traffic, but now you'll be able to fix that automatically.
That's correct, and with fiber communication, we no longer use the clocks, so they're synced up. It's just a much more system that's integrated.
And if you're seeing a lot of volume for traffic in one direction or another, you can automatically change the timing for the lights to address what you're seeing in the surge of traffic.
We have, we'll have the capability with, with this software to do those type of operations from the office.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Singh?
Mr. Claybo, I read 28 different traffic lights. Was that correct?
I think it was 23.
Okay. Is that all of the traffic lights that are along Middlebrook from that, from Johann to University?
It includes a little bit of University Avenue as well.
Okay, great, because Vinazdale and Middlebrook Pike is a real big problem.
Yep.
So, hopefully, it gives some space in between. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, I just wanted briefly note the environmental aspect of this. People are sitting at traffic lights when there's no reason to be there other than, you know, lack of technology, burning gas, and so, all the obvious things, to me anyway, about the impact and help to the environment, that this is not just about traffic flow and making things more convenient. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McKenzie?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to say that I'm really glad to see this moving in the right direction. This has been, Middlebrook Pike has been such a congested area for a very long time, and now with us seeing more housing, a development in that area, it's just gotten even worse. So, it affects not just the 6th, but the 2nd and the 3rd district as well, as it goes such a long stretch there. So, I think that we'll see people a lot more pleased with the flow of the traffic and the ease of being able to maneuver through, you know, Middlebrook Pike. And it is kind of a, for me, it's kind of, I'll get off the interstate and I'll go down Middlebrook Pike to get down west a lot of times, and so that just adds additional traffic. So, I think this is going to be a huge improvement that people will be very pleased with in the long run.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11L is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Barge Design Solutions Incorporated to provide construction, engineering, and inspection services for the Middlebrook Pike Advanced Traffic Management System project in an amount not to exceed
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11M is a resolution authorizing the mayor to adopt the major update to the Knox County, City of Knoxville, and Town of Farragut Multi-Jurisdictional Local Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11N is a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend the agreement with Superior Traffic Control LLC to continue providing special event flagging and traffic control services Control LLC to continue providing special event flagging and traffic control services for the city's engineering department, increasing the annual contract amount by $175,000 for a new annual amount of $250,000.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11O is a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend the agreement with AWP Incorporated to continue providing special event flagging and traffic control services for the city's engineering department, increasing the annual contract amount by $50,000 for a new annual amount of $75,000.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Parker, sorry.
Just a quick question. The increase on these contracts is by a substantial percentage, and I'm just curious what may have caused that change in the initial contract.
Mr. Claybo?
So, the initial contract, we, if you recall, we had a budget amendment to introduce, we needed some help with all the events we were having and needing flagging services. So, we started the contracts with that. So, this is new FY '26 budget funds that we're rolling into the contracts.
Gotcha. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11P is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with Knox County to accept $19,000 in grant funds as a subrecipient of the 2025 Homeland Security Grant in order to purchase a laser methane detector for the Knoxville Fire Department.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11Q is a resolution authorizing the submission of the 2025, 2025, 2029 Consolidated Plan for Housing and Community Development and the 2025, 2026 Action Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorizing the mayor to execute any associated documents and certifications under the Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnerships Act, and Emergency Solutions Program Grants, or Grant Programs.
Motion made to approve and second it. And both Kevin DeBeauz and Lynda Rust are here if you have any questions. Vice Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to first compliment Ms. Rust and Mr. DeBeauz for excellent process, and particularly last week, the presentation was clear. The sources of all these fundings, of all this funding is not easy to keep clean and need to understand, so you did a great job of expressing all of that. I have a question and a comment. One is just to confirm, this is a five-year framework, but we approve one-year plans throughout those five years. Is that right, Mr. DeBeauz? Okay. Thank you. You helped remind me of that today. It looks like the majority of this goes towards housing supply and units, which is good and is an important part of the housing shortage we have. So, I commend the mayor and this administration for that focus. We had a good conversation today. The other part that I'd like to make a comment on is, we're hopefully going to see the Office of Housing Stability Strategic Plan soon, Deputy Ball. When do we, when do you, when should we expect to see that?
Ms. Ball, I can't remember what Erin Reed said the last time I asked her about when this was coming.
I think that, if I recall correctly, we're hoping to have that around the September timeframe.
Okay. My overarching concern that outlives me on this council is that the other part of housing is the people on the ground that are homeless now, and this is just one source of funding to help with that, but in this source of funding, it's minor. And so, I just want to make sure that as that Office on Housing Stability Strategic Plan comes out, if there's a prioritization in there, which I expect there to be, around better services for people who are already homeless, I would encourage this administration and future councils to consider the other high-priority items on this list that you all handed out, specifically the one-stop-shop resource and low-barrier shelters. I know we had that money and we had the vision for it, and the space was available, we could do it right now. But this council's waited and supported directionally Office on Housing Stability and a lot of things over the years to get us to this point. And while we continue to invest in permanent supportive housing and housing units, we should also soon pivot to better coordination and funding collaboration among the agencies that are here and dealing with the people who are homeless now. So, I understand it's a balance. We've got to catch up to the housing deficit, but there's a lot of people that need help right now, and so, I just want to put that plug in for next year's consolidated plan and the Office on Housing Stability Strategic Plan when it comes out, that I'm hoping there's a lot more focus on social service, or homeless services now, and what we can control with local dollars. So, it's just my continued plug for that part of this continuum. So, thanks for the hard work on this. I plan to support it.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker, and then Roberto.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the Office on Housing Neighborhood Development for all of your hard work on this plan. I know that it takes several, several months to pull it together, and I do wish we had both the plan in here as well as a good summary page like is presented at the, at the public meeting, which I was able to attend via Zoom and appreciated that opportunity. One thing that continues to come up each time I attend one of those public meetings is the level of investment in those homeless services, and I think folks are shocked to find what that number is, both in terms of what federal dollars that we've traditionally received and not receiving this year, and then what we dedicate in terms of local dollars. And I've been one to advocate for us to increase our annual commitment. I appreciate that the city has committed to matching the HUD funds that go towards emergency services grants, which is for our homeless services, but I believe we need to make an annual commitment to increase those funds because we continue to see a need, and a need that's growing. One thing, a couple of things similar to what was mentioned earlier, this report relies on other reports that we haven't seen, and one of those is the report, the strategic plan from the Office on Housing Stability. So, it's difficult for me to approve a report that references another report that I haven't read. Some of my other concerns are feeling that, and this was, this was highlighted during the comments, one of my questions during the public meeting was, would we, would city council receive all public comments sent into the office? And I believe that was through, what was it, July 1st or last night? And I wasn't sure if we would get all public comments, which I assumed would come by email, but I didn't get the additional public comments.
Ms. Parker, Mr. Johnson said, you know, the time is up, so I'll come back to you after Mr. Roberto speaks.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Roberto, Councilmember Roberto.
Thank you, Mayor. Director DeBeauz, being very mindful of affordability, especially when we're talking about housing, earlier before the meeting got started, I got to meet with some of our city interns, and, you know, there was a lot of discussion about affordability with regard to housing. So, I think this is a great meeting that they are attending, that we can have a discussion about it. I remember from previous discussions that in order to meet demand, to address affordability in our community, we were going to need to have 6,000 to 8,000 new units by, I think it was 2029. So, I thought this was a good opportunity for you to talk to us about where we are in relation to those units coming online and being permitted.
Mr. DeBeauz?
Yeah. Thank you for the question. Kevin DeBeauz, Housing and Neighborhood Development. You are correct. In order to answer the call to reverse some of the, of the housing crisis, our bold goal was to create 6,000 to 8,000 new housing units by 2029. The good news is we're on pace. In order to be on pace, we would need to have 1,200 to 1,600 units each year open up. We were at 1,489 permitted last year and growing. Of those 444 were affordable. The others, I would consider most of them attainable housing, which we need all housing units to reverse our supply and demand issue. You know, we are going great guns in terms of reversing the trend. And, you know, we wake up every day with the mindset of housing development, but also preservation. You know, thanks to, thank you also for the question, Vice Mayor, about the 87% geared toward housing. I want to mention that within that 87%, a lot of that is housing preservation. That is keeping owner occupants in their homes. These are, these are low-income neighbors who may not have the ability to finance a rehab loan, and they become more code deficient each year. A lot of that money goes there. A lot of money goes to emergency repairs, to roofs and things like that. So, and then we also are protecting rental properties from going and flipping to market rates. So, a lot of that money is used for those activities, but together, we're trying to do our best to make Knoxville as affordable a place to live as possible.
That's, 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 I really appreciate the focus and the intentionality with the goal of continuing to increase supply, not only of market rate, but also workforce housing. That leads to another question. One thing I've heard as a criticism that folks have, that some folks have said, is that the affordable housing that's being built is not of as high a quality as the market rate housing. And that is not my understanding about what is going on, because the construction that is being, you know, we're using our tax incentives to build, is at the same level of quality as market rate housing is being built, and the difference in the workforce ability for that affordability piece is that the tax incentives are lowering that rental price. Could you maybe talk to the quality of the work that's being done?
You're absolutely correct. Dominion was mentioned earlier. Dominion would tell you the only difference between their affordable housing projects and their market rate is just the subsidies that they receive from, you know, the local government as well as low-income tax credits. It's those financing mechanisms that make them affordable. It's the same units, they're high-end finishes. We've walked through, you know, a lot of council members and the mayor have walked through these units. They're high-end. Yeah, we have chosen, to this point, not to invest in low-cost, low-material, you know, projects where, you know, they're smaller and the materials may not be the same. You know, I'm not totally against those, it's just, you know, in this season, in trying to get this inventory back up, we felt like we needed good stable house that's going to last us another 50 years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker.
Thank you, Mayor. So, as I was saying, you know, there are concerns that I have with the report and with where our funds are being prioritized and where we are increasing our local investment based on how we're using the HUD funds. One part of the report discusses essentially like the burden of housing costs at different income, at different income levels. And you see the stress on the lower-income categories. And to me, what that says is, that's an emergency. We need to focus our attention on, you know, shifting from 400 of the 1,400 units each year being affordable to 800 of the 1,400. You know what I mean? To me, that has to be the priority, that lower-income base, because those are the folks who are facing not pressures that may force them to move, but serious quality of life issues that could have some really long-term ramifications. So, I'm more concerned about the growing burden on those lower economic income levels. I'm also worried about focusing on just supply and demand because even if the numbers are slowing, we're still seeing outside dollars purchasing homes in this community. There's still a lot of interest in Knoxville. And when those individuals are coming in with more money than our current residents have, it's pushing folks out. So, it's not going to solve our housing crisis. It's going to simply replace our low-income residents with a higher income of folks. I wanted to comment on this quality of affordable housing, because when, I still am planning to put all of our reports that we received on the housing into a table so that we can actually look at these numbers and exactly what's going on here. Because when you're talking to us about 1,400 and something permits, we're talking about all housing coming into Knoxville, correct? Not just housing that we've subsidized.
Yeah. The 444 units were affordable, and let me assure you, those are the only units that receive our cash. There were 916 units that received some sort of incentive forms that are non-cash-related, mainly through a form of a payment in lift tax, but our cash only goes to affordable housing.
Right. But what, but you said 400 and something permits were issued.
444, yes.
Well, you said a 1,400 number.
So, the total was 1,489 of that 444.
Right.
Yeah, so the balance of there, whatever that is, of 1,100,000, would be, you know, folks just market rate or otherwise.
Right.
Yeah. But they're not receiving anything from us.
Right. Not receiving anything from us, but what they may have received is a zoning change. What they may have received is the ability to build a pre-manufactured home and put it on a site when they couldn't do that six years before. So, there are changes that it either we, or the county, or a planning commission, or at the state level, we're making decisions, trying to bring in housing more quickly, but it could result in lower standard affordable housing. I just wanted to point that out. So, I just, I continue to push for us to prioritize those lower-income levels and be cognizant of conditions we could be creating that could contribute to gentrification and pushing residents out of their communities that they've been in, some for generations. That's, that's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fugit, and then Vice Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. DeBeauz, just a quick follow-up question on some of the comments Councilwoman Parker made. If, how much direct money would it have cost us to double the 441 units?
Well, good question.
And round numbers? I mean, about how much did we put in to get those 441 units?
Yeah, so we've invested, as a city, in the last five years, about $50 million, and that has resulted in the 2,600 number unit of, of housing that's been produced. So if I were to back that down in terms of, you know, what it would cost per, per unit, we're, we're, we're investing in about a million a complex. And so, in order to, to double that number, I would, I would guesstimate another 5 million.
Okay, thank you. And, and I understand Councilwoman Parker's concerns, and I think we all share that, but supply is what helps lower the cost of things. The more you have of something, the cheaper it becomes. And so it is a delicate balancing act that we, that we're having to straddle, because, and it is true. People who relocate from communities where housing costs more, and they come with more cash, they buy homes more expensively. Fortunately, some of that has slowed. The market is beginning to level out, and that's not happening as much. Homes are staying on the market longer, so I am pleased reading the Realtor Report that the housing market is normalizing a little from where it was three, four years ago. So I do think the concerted effort that the city has made to incentivize the construction of more housing in general, but using our direct dollars on the units that would not be built but for our subsidies, has been pretty successful in a short amount of time. So I commend your department on, on doing that. And we'd always like to have more money to do more, but I think we've leveraged what we were able to, to come up with, to make as big an impact as possible in as short amount of time. So I just wanted to commend you and Ms. Rust, I want to call you by your first name, but Ms. Rust, for, for that hard work, because the two of you have been at this career for, well, we've all known each other for quite a few years. And you've been diligently working on this issue of affordable housing your entire careers, and have gone through some of the toughest times in this field within the last five years. And so I just appreciate how hard you've worked to really make as quick an impact as possible. So thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Smith?
Just a question. For NOAs, where we incentivize developers to improve accommodations, what contractual obligation are they to invest a certain amount of money to improve the facility, as opposed to just pocketing the incentive?
Yeah, so naturally occurring affordable housing, those are those developments that are 30 years and older. And for many years in Knoxville, that was the source, a bigger source for affordable housing than any, you know, that was the source. And what happens in a tight market is, you know, because of the supply and demand issue, those landlords are able to, to charge higher rents. And so what we're doing, and I want to mention KCDC and Urban Design and Development as, as key in this work, is off, is offering tax incentives for those developers at the time of development. Our re-renovation, at the time of renovation, we offer those, those incentives in order, in exchange for a long period of affordability. And that has worked pretty well. We want to add more levers to that, because we do recognize that, you know, that is an important source. You know, we have two, two levers. We have the affordable units that people use a voucher on, and we're, we're increasing the inventory of those every day, and, and that's going great guns. But we really need to have that naturally occurring affordable housing force at work in Knoxville. And the only way to do that is, is through increasing our supply.
And on those NOAs where there is an incentive, there is an agreement with the developer?
Oh, yes, yes.
And it includes refurbishment or whatever improvements need to be made? Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, eight one. Okay, thank you.
12T is an ordinance to amend ordinance number O-107-2019, known and cited as the City of Knoxville zoning code, to remove a previously approved planned district designation from property located at 2727 Tacoma Drive, Brian Pitcher, applicant, 4th District.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded, Councilmember Ryder.
Yeah, Ms. Brooks, I have a question. The, it looks like a large area, usually the, the plan development, this is the old plan development, that we don't have on the books anymore. It looks like it covers a large area in here, it's not specific to just this property, it just, do you know anything about that? I've, I've just not had one of these in that particular area. The Whittle Springs area around the golf course to the, to the west of it.
Yeah, so this was a part of a, had a 2012 USON review.
Okay.
Under that former RP1.
Okay.
District.
Okay.
So that's what warranted that C designation for this.
But, but it covers the area, so there's like, when you look at KGIS, there's like a mini-block radius that is covered by, so anytime any of those properties, it's like, almost like a giant overlay district. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. That's kind of unusual, isn't it?
No, we see that all across the city with these formerly planned districts.
Okay, okay. I just don't think I've ran into a swath of it in the 4th District quite like this.
Most of them have been developed out.
Okay, so we wouldn't see.
You wouldn't see them.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12V is an ordinance approving the request of Reginald Bell for amendment to the east city sector plan from low-density residential to medium-density residential for property located at 3309 Boyd's Bridge Pike, leaving any special purpose land use classifications unchanged, 6th District.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to combine items V, W, and X. They're all on the same.
Okay, the motion is made to consolidate items 12V, W, and X. It's been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion on the motion to consolidate? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? A motion to consolidate carries. And is there a motion on the consolidated three?
Move to approve.
Okay. Motion made to approve and seconded. There is one person signed up to speak to this item, Ms. Zaviska. You come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Thank you very much. Ellen Zaviska, 3118 Fairview Street, speaking to you tonight on behalf of Yes Knoxville. We are an organization supporting more housing choices and more transportation opportunities in the city. And I wanted to speak in favor of this development, which represents an opportunity for new housing in a neighborhood that is very much in need of investment. All of you are painfully aware, we've spoken about it, the housing crisis our city faces, and the need for developments of all sizes, and for developments both market rate and affordable, to address that crisis and make housing more affordable. I understand from looking at the record at Planning Commission that the staff had recommended against approval of this item. I understand why they made that decision, I served on that staff myself. I have a great deal of respect for the staff and leadership of Planning Commission, but they, you know, sort of have to follow a logic of, if conditions haven't changed, to justify a sector plan update, then they typically recommend it against it, whether it's, you know, a quality project or not. And that logic that the staff has to follow is that to, you know, unfortunately, it means that if a neighborhood isn't already changing, it's more difficult for it to change. And you end up with a neighborhood that's been historically disinvested in, that continues to be disinvested in. And again, all due respect to the Planning Commission staff, they're following, you know, sort of the rules that they're given. But I would encourage council to recognize that, you know, we shouldn't hold the lack of change in this neighborhood against it, or against this development, and especially when we need so much housing throughout our city and more investment in this neighborhood. And I hope you'll support this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McKenzie?
Thank you, Mayor. Is Mr. Basil or Mr. Bell, if one of you would like to come to the podium?
Is there someone here representing the property owners, the developer?
They were here.
I saw that, yeah.
Yeah, they may have stepped down. Well, I just want to say that I'm glad, personally glad, to see this development. This is the neighborhood that I grew up in, still reside in at this point. And so I do agree that it's been a long time to see new investment in this area, but it is a long time coming, and it is welcomed in this community. I've had the opportunity to go out and walk some of that property, challenge it. To me, it looked that it would be challenged, but I do know Mr. Bell, Mr. Basil's work historically, and they are definitely not afraid of challenges, and I look forward to this addition in our community, in my community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, I also really respect the staff's report, and they do a good job on that. On this one, the councilperson for that district, I'm sure is fairly knowledgeable, and I will defer to her judgment on this one. So I'll be voting in favor of it.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker?
Actually, never mind, nope.
Okay. Seeing no further questions or comments, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next, we have public forum. We have five people signed up to speak at public forum. We'll start with the person, the first person on the list, Laura Parrott. Ms. Parrott, are you present? Okay, please come to the podium, if you'll state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay. I am Laura Parrott. I am the president of the ATU with CAT, Local 1164. And I'm here today to inform you that they're not bargaining in good faith, and we don't have a contract. And we just, we're just out there. So I'm just here to let you know that today. Thank you.
Okay, next person signed up to speak is Melissa Stukesbury. Ms. Stukesbury, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
My name is Melissa Stukesbury, and I've been a bus operator for Knoxville Area Transit for about 18 years. First, I'd like to thank the mayor, the city council, for giving us the opportunity to be here tonight. And I would also like to thank my fellow coworkers who came here tonight as well. We have tried previously to go through the proper channels to address some of the issues that we've been having at Knoxville Area Transit through the chain of command, but we really haven't gotten anywhere. Through Isaac Thorne, our general manager, Grant Rosenbaum, Mayor Kinkannon, the company, as Laura said, is not honoring the contract with us. Grievances have been filed on violations in the contract, and CAT management team regularly violates the union company contract. We've had large numbers of management and operators terminated, many of which employed with CAT for a significant number of years. This was their career. All of these people did not deserve to be terminated. With so many employees being terminated, other employees are afraid to step forward, to speak up, in fear of losing their jobs. We, as a union, have been hearing rumors of CAT being financially in trouble, and the possibility of funds, grants, or monies being mismanaged. So mayor and council members, we came here asking for your help on these issues, and I would like to thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Kathy Bailey. Ms. Bailey, are you present? Kathy Bailey? Is Ms. Bailey present? We'll go to the next person, and if Ms. Bailey returns, she can, she can have her opportunity. Maurice Clark. You're next, if you'd like. Okay, do you wish to speak?
No.
Okay. Next is Bart Gibbons. Mr. Gibbons, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Well, Bart Gibbons, Michael Lane, 37912. Good evening, council. I'm here to speak briefly about legacy and our city's transit system, and what it has become under the current CAT administration, who alone gets our approval for the changes that have taken place by you, the city council. Over the past several years, we have removed a staple to the city of Knoxville, the free trolley system, replacing it with a downtown connector. The trolley system has been a part of Knoxville since long before any of us were born. It was a symbol of the golden years of the past, going from horse-drawn to electric to gas-powered. Now it's gone. We eliminated service for many neighborhood passengers when CAT decided that it needed to be reimagined. This new system, though, helped some, hurt many by making it more difficult to access public transit. Reimagine also saw it beneficial to extend the distance between bus stops, which average over a quarter-mile in separation. This distance does not take into consideration people of all ages and locations to service. We have removed bus routes from high-passenger traffic areas down Merchant Drive and Pleasant Ridge, only to increase service down the Cumberland Strip. Your priorities for this federally-funded service are skewed. Are we really providing service that serves the people, or are we using this federally-funded service to support an agenda? reimagine left many disabled passengers going through dialysis, having to wait for hours to go to and fro for their treatment, because reimagine thought it best and more efficient to remove those riders from our service and give that task to CAC. Now we are coming to a crossroads. CAT wants to make major changes to the lift department and its personnel that would affect our operators' livelihood by limiting their ability to work overtime due to trying to make the lift department a separate entity apart from the mainline bus service. Operators that have worked for CAT for 30 years would be required to be retrained to work a mainline bus run, but would be exempt from training when they were to work a shuttle for the Smokies ballgame. Makes no sense. Are we serving the community or the agenda of the council? We are in contract negotiations, and the prospect of a favorable outcome does not look good. How important is public transit in Knoxville? How important is public transit to you, our city council? Is public transit for the needs of the people, or is it for the agenda of the city? It seems as if this council is creating their own little tower of abble, right here on Rocky Top. And while climbing those steps, you are failing to look down at the mess that is all around. We, as operators, are the eyes and ears of the city. We see things that you all have only heard about. The people are hurting. Why hurt them more by limiting a federally-funded transportation service only so it can serve the wants of this council and its in- the wants of this council and its investors, which they rely on to continue to build their tower? We are not a metropolis, we are not LA, we are not New York, we are not even Nashville. I think it's time to realize that. A final comment. The last Transportation Authority meeting on June twenty-sixth lasted all of eight minutes and seven seconds. With so much at stake, such a large amount of money that's being spent and managed, so many issues on the table, how could a monthly meeting at this critical time last such a short period of time? CAT's director, Isaac Thorne, had little to nothing to say in his report to the board, and his second-in-command, Pat Downs, said nothing at all. With that said, I hope you can see, we, as operators, maintenance personnel, and supervisors are up against. Thank you for lending me your ear.
Just one last chance, if Kathy Bailey has returned, she did sign up, or someone signed her up. Is Kathy Bailey present?
I don't know.
You don't wish to speak? Okay. Well, that concludes public forum. Without objection, this meeting is adjourned.